On behalf of the town of Silver City, I’m calling this meeting of the Town Council to order. I’d like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregined, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you, and I’d like to welcome all of you here tonight. I’d also like to acknowledge members of the city administration that are here, Alex Brown, our manager, Jim Reynolds, our attorney, Alfred Sodio, our clerk, and also Jackie Olayo, the community development director, our police chief, Portillo, and our fire chief, Lambert. We also have members of the code enforcement department here, Vicky Tony and Thomas Hernandez. I would like to also welcome members of the press and also all of you here tonight. I’d like to also tell you that Councilor Prince will be here by telephone tonight. The first item on the agenda is number two, changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Next is item three, ceremonies, and there are none. Next is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council comments, and I’d like to remind the public that council comments represent their own personal view and does not represent any town position. First on the list tonight is Councilor Ben Coma.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first start out by recognizing Carnitas y Mas Fiesta that took place on the Labor Day weekend. It was a really good turnout. I actually got to celebrate my birthday during that event. The people I spoke to at the fiesta were really pleased that we have this and they want to continue to have this every year. Yesterday, I received a copy of the museum newsletter, and I was really impressed with a lot of the articles that were written in there and a lot of the information. And I just want to thank Bart Roselli and his staff for putting this together. And if you haven’t been to the museum, I know a lot of locals perhaps have not done that. Most of the tourists spend their time visiting the museum. I would encourage people to go to the museum. They do a really good job. On another note, on a somber note, I didn’t mention it two weeks ago because I had just heard about this prior to our council meeting. I didn’t want to say anything until I knew if, in fact, it was true. But we lost a former city councillor by the name of Ralph Dominguez. Ralph served as a city congressman for seven years. He was my neighbor directly across from my street where I used to live. So I want to pass on my condolences to Terry, his wife, and his family. Tomorrow is September 11th, and as you all recall, 23 years ago, we had a, our country was invaded by a terrorist group, and there was a lot of civilians lost their lives. I think over 2,000 people died in that incident. We had 343 firefighters that perished, and a lot of civilians that were helping other people escape the burning towers. There’s a saying in the Bible, I can’t recall it, but there’s no greater love than to lay down your life. And a lot of people showed that during that event. I’ll be getting together with a couple of retired firefighters. Some of my officers will be having lunch, and Chief, you’re more than welcome to attend. And we’ll probably be just recalling a lot of good things that we did while we were in the fire service and perhaps a lot of the bad things that we saw as firefighters. And that’s all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Connaughton?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate the people that have worked on Carnitas y Mas for another successful event. I know he doesn’t like to be called out, but since he’s in the audience, Joe Ray and Olga Ray, you work so hard all year long to make sure that that is a successful event. So thank you for the work that you and your committee put in to doing that. It’s always a good event, and I enjoyed it a lot, so I’m already looking forward to next year. Every time we say the salute to the New Mexico State flag, I think about something that I’ve been working on for almost a year now. One of the things I’d like to see happen is that we put a welcome on our welcome signs in Apache. And the reason for that is because we are a tri-cultural community, and I feel like that’s something that needs to be included. I know that there’s been some holdups, and eventually it’s going to come to the councils, so I just want you to be aware of that. So hopefully it’ll happen soon, because like I said, I’ve been working on it for a year, and it’s getting frustrating at this point. So hopefully, maybe by the next meeting, it’ll be in front of us, and we can make a decision and put that welcome as well, because I think it’s really important. And then the last thing, I talked about this at the last meeting, and I’m going to say it again, even though I’m pretty sure the person that keeps doing this doesn’t watch cats and probably doesn’t read the newspaper either, but we are not police officers. The five of us have never been police officers. We probably never will be police officers. So if you see a crime in progress, you need to call dispatch. Please don’t send us an email. Yesterday, we all got an email that there was an alleged attempted stabbing, which the police never heard about, so that’s why I say alleged. But we got that email probably six hours after the alleged incident, and I mean, by then, nothing can be done. So if you see a crime in progress, please call dispatch because an actual police officer needs to attend to that, not five of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor. Thursday, the 12th of September, is National Day of Encouragement. It is a day set aside to encourage those around you and make a positive impact. Encouragement is important because it helps recognize efforts, keep someone trying, and lift someone up when they’re down. We all like to hear words of encouragement. Even a small positive word to a stranger can make a person’s day. What a difference it would make if everyone in Silver City provided a positive affirmation on Thursday. Also, it is a good time to thank and support town employees for a job well done. There’s a wide range of tasks and details attended to on a daily basis that keep our community operating and Silver City a great place to live. Thanks again to town employees, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilor Prince?
Thank you, Mayor Roger. I would just wish to encourage everyone to attend Friday, September 20th, open house at the Silver City Water Works. As a partnership between the town of Silver City and Southwest New Mexico Agriculture and Terrorists Group, the event will be held 11 to 1:00 with ceremony at 11:00, just to show off everything that’s been happening with renovations and improvements at the Water Works. And then the following day, Saturday day, encourage everyone to visit over at Galt’s Park and meet together for the Silver City Project Festival, an annual event, and one of the favorites each year. Just wish to encourage them to attend. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had a few comments. First of all, I’d like to congratulate community member Diane Engels Libra. She was one of seven New Mexicans to receive the Governor’s Award of Excellence in the Arts. I also want to announce that on October the 4th, there will be various individuals who will be recognized by the WNMU Hall of Fame. Being inducted this year are some pretty noble individuals, including Gilbert Arizaga, Representative Louis Terraces, and last but not least, our very own Alex Brown. They are receiving the Distinguished Alumni Award. Also, I’m in a grateful mood tonight, and I too want to thank Jose Ray, his wife Ogler, their family members, and all of the committee members they had working on the event last weekend. That also included members of the police department, the fire department, and also code enforcement. Thank you all for all the contributions you made to help make that event successful. I’d also like to say that last Saturday, the Senior Olympics Committee had their award ceremony. And I’d like to thank Alfred Ogas, Mario Cantana, and Fred Baca, and all of their committee members for working hard to make this awards and recognition banquet a real success. Also want to recognize members of the city council for all of your contributions to the community to make it a little bit better than it already is. To me, it’s an overwhelming point that I can scarce take in of the tremendous number of community volunteers that we have that makes Silver City the great place that it is. It doesn’t include just individual members. It includes organizations and groups, and I would be remiss if I didn’t include our city committee members on the various committees. All of these folks work tirelessly to contribute to the community. You usually don’t see their name out there in the limelight, but they work behind the scenes to do marvelous things, and I want to personally thank them. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 27, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Councilor Ben Coma?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 27, 2024.
Is there a second? Councilor Snyder?
A second. The motion is stated.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public input, and I see that two people have signed up. Jose Ray?
And thank you, Mayor, city council, staff, the chiefs, Andrew Tudo, and you guys. I want to thank the city council, all of you guys, for allowing us to go on with this fiesta, because without you guys, we wouldn’t be able to do it. We can only think about it, and if you guys support us, then it’s a success. Juno, thank you for giving us the article on the paper. I appreciate it. Chief Portillo, junior police officers. These two guys back here, Vicky and Tomas, these guys are awesome. They are awesome, very awesome. We’re glad to have them. Jackie and Maria went way out of their way, way out of their way, to help us with this fiesta. We had mentioned, I had mentioned, there was going to be a carnival. They didn’t show up. They backed out on us, and we found out where they were at, but listening to hear them over there. Mr. Brown, thank you, Mr. Brown. We really appreciate it. Thank you for your advice. We always welcome your advice. Sheriff Nueva and Anthony Ben Coma and their officers were showing up with us. The Silver City crews, town, park, all those guys, they went way out of their way. Councilor Ben Coma and his wife helping us clean. That’s the best part about it, is cleaning up the park. We are working for it for next year, and hopefully, we can have it next year. This year was a hard one to do. We had some people back out on us at the last minute, some food vendors and some band members. So anyway, all in all, it turned out to be good. We did have a very slow Friday, a very slow Friday. Next year, we’re going to do it just on Saturday and Sunday. I think it’s better if we just do the two days. Without two people supporting us, again, we could never have it done. We had a lot of sponsors this year, a lot of sponsors, and they all helped us. Gabriel Ramos, Luisa Rasa Chapel, Freeport McMorn, Reagan Vaughn from the garbage, for lack of a better word. There was quite a few sponsors, and we did have a lot of fun. All in all, it went very well. There was a few things that we couldn’t handle. But again, thank you guys very much, and we hope to do it again next year. We’ve got to help. Hope you guys will allow it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Gabriel Ramos.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council, staff. I really do appreciate the time to go ahead and speak in front of you today. Today, I’m coming in front of you to let you know that I’m running for Senate District 28. And to give you a little bit of my background, I’ve served my country. When I was 17 years old, I took my first oath of office. I also served as county clerk here in this building. I was fortunate enough to help design this building back, oh, it’s been quite a while now. I’ve also served for the Hurley Town Council as mayor pro temp. I’ve served the Cobry School District on the Cobry School Board. I’ve also served as a county commissioner here in this building. I’ve also served as Senate District 28. It’s been a great privilege. It’s an honor and a privilege to serve this community. We have a great community. All the great things you have just talked about now is just a proven fact that we’ve got some great people here. You know, I’ve been very fortunate to serve in all these multiple areas. I’ve got a lot of great experience, and I want to make sure that I can go ahead and utilize and represent you and continue to do great things. I want to do great things with you. I want to be, I want to be part of your team. I want to be here when there’s ups and there’s downs and figure out how we’re going to handle different things that we need in this community. I really do respect all of you for serving. Serving is tough. You know, putting your name out there is rough at times, and I know exactly how it feels. I know what it means to be a state senator. I know how to get projects done. I’ve been fortunate enough to provide different fundings and different sources for different projects throughout the community. I was able to help with the Tucasa project when I was a county commissioner. I helped out at the Veterans Center, and we put that together. We were able to design a very good center there. And I’ve done very many projects throughout the whole county, throughout southwest New Mexico. And I want to really put that experience to use to help you all and help our citizens of Grant County in southwest New Mexico. Again, thank you all for what you all are doing, and I want to put this great experience to use to help southwest New Mexico. And whenever you’re hiring someone, you always look for someone with the most experience. And I guarantee you, there’s not anybody else in Grant County right now that has the experience that I do. And I want to go ahead and help everyone, from independents to Democrats, progressives, Republicans. You know, whenever you’re in office, you don’t look at an R or D or an I. You look at what you can do to help everyone. And that’s what I want to do. I want to make myself available to everyone. I’ve got, I’ve been a local business owner for many years here, since I first started my first car wash in 1997. Kind of gives you my history and tells you how old I am. But I’ve been involved in many, many things here in Grant County. I’ve been fortunate enough to coach baseball, soccer, basketball, even sports that I never played as a kid, you know? And I’ve been a local umpire. I’ve been very involved throughout the public and very involved in serving, in serving my country, serving our counties, serving our municipalities, and serving our school districts. So I just want to bring my experience and utilize it to help everyone. And I thank you very much for the time that you have given me to speak to you. I think my time is up. Thank you very much, y muchas gracias. Agarrezco su apoyo, y por favor, vayan y voten el día cinco de noviembre. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is reports. We have a report by Allison Civic, Director of a GILR Resources Information Project known as GRIP.
Good evening, city council, Mayor and city council. Thanks so much for the invitation to be here today. I’m going to, Maribel Medel from Western New Mexico University is going to kick off our presentation tonight on the Southwest New Mexico Community Forestry Network. So, Maribel?
Thank you, Allison. Hello, council members, staff. Thank you so much for the invitation to speak and for allowing us to come and tell you about our project that we have. So we’re representing the Rural Southwest New Mexico Integrated Urban Forestry Project, and it is a five-year, $5 million grant that was awarded to Western New Mexico University this year, and we’re in our first year of implementation. So just to give you a really quick overview of what that grant project entails, so it’s basically three components. The first of which being a new program at Western New Mexico University, a certificate in urban forestry and abora culture that we’re building from the ground up, which is going to offer some workforce development in the field of abora culture, urban forestry. And it is kind of like a fast-track certificate to get students into the field of working in trees, perhaps working in the Forest Service or other adjacent industries in town. The second part of that grant is our campus arboretum. So our campus arboretum is going to serve as a living laboratory for students to learn about trees while they’re getting that certificate at the school. In addition to that, it’s going to serve as an events place and a learning place for community members who are also interested in learning about urban forestry, abora culture, tree maintenance, how to care for trees, how to plant trees for themselves. The third part of that, which is why we’re here to speak today, is our Community Forestry Network. And that is headed up by my two colleagues here, who will introduce themselves. But that is the development of six individual community forestry plans for our six neighboring communities. So that’s going to be Bayard, Santa Clara, Hurley, Lordsburg, Deming, as well as Silver City. So we want to tell you a bit about what that community engagement is and what we are going to do in those communities with the community’s help and input. Thank you.
Thank you, Maribel. And I should have mentioned, you all have in your packets two things. You’ve got a fact sheet that is an overview of the project with Western, and then you also have the community engagement roadmap, which is, will tell you more about the community portion of this project. So as Maribel said, the Southwest New Mexico Community Forestry Network, the goal of the project is to build the tree canopy in six communities in southwestern New Mexico. And really, the point of this is to create shade and all the other wonderful benefits that trees provide to our communities. And so the forest, this is funded under USDA Forest Service. A big priority for them is creating tree equity in disadvantaged communities, and that is really what this project is doing. So what do I mean by that? So the data show that disadvantaged communities have fewer trees than wealthier communities. And so this project is really aimed at sort of providing that equity across all communities. So we’ve got, we’re going to be planting 1,000 trees over the next four and a half years in the six communities, and we’re going to be, as well, providing each community with tree care and maintenance. So safety pruning, addressing dead and downed. We’ve met with Milo and his staff about hazardous fuel reduction. We’re the only community in the six, out of the six communities in southwestern New Mexico with high riparian fire risk, so that’s something that we need to be dealing with. So first step is planning. We are in the planning phase right now. That’s the community engagement roadmap that you have in your packets, really maps out what that looks like. We’re going to be putting community forestry plans together, and then we’re going to start implementation. And we’ll be working with town staff and looking at kind of where those trees go. The forestry plan is going to help us do that. So that gives you an idea sort of of the overall project. I do want to introduce a couple folks. So Mariah Runnels is GRIP’s Tree Stewardship Coordinator, and Mariah is going to be responsible for actually coordinating the tree planting projects on the ground. And then we also have six community forestry liaisons that are going to be liaisoning between the project and each of the six communities. And we’re super happy to have Jackie Olaya with the Community Development Department serving that role, because obviously, we’re going to be working hand in hand with town staff on all of the tree planting projects. And it’s not only tree planting, but it’s also irrigation, and it’s also green stormwater infrastructure as well. We’re trying to integrate all of that, take a holistic approach when we look at these projects. So that gives you an overview. We are super fortunate to have Integrated Biological Solutions as our subcontractor heading up the community engagement and the planning portion, helping us with implementation as well. Sarah Hurtow, she’s the mastermind between Albuquerque’s Tree Planting Program, and so we’re really fortunate to have her and her team bringing all that expertise here to us in Silver City and the other five communities in southwestern New Mexico. So I’m going to hand this over to Sarah.
Thanks, Allison. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this project. As Allison said, we’re just embarking into the planning phase of this community forestry plan, and really, what we’re doing is trying to gather information from residents and all of the staff in the municipalities in the six communities that we’re working in to inform the development of those plans. So to start that off, according to the document that you have in front of you, the community engagement roadmap, we’ve launched the community engagement on Saturday in Hurley at the salsa showdown, and all of the individual communities have multiple ways to engage with the survey that we have out right now. We’re collecting input until November 1st. And so these are examples of some of the items that you’ll see in our survey. You have all of the tree benefits, some of which Allison mentioned a few moments ago, and also a tree palette to help give you an idea of the kinds of plants that we could plant around the community and to help you tell us what your preferences are, along with a whole host of other questions that we have for you. So we hope that you will help us spread the word in getting this survey out to the community members. We’ve already gotten 39 responses from community members from Silver City, so that is a really great start to this survey, having been open for only a few days. So we hope that you will continue to spread the word. There’s lots of ways for people to give us input. We will be hosting information hubs at most of the city and county buildings and the library. There will be paper surveys available, and of course, we will have the online survey that folks can complete. So I will stop there and see if there’s any questions for us.
And just one I forgot to mention, our website is live. It went live on Friday, so it’s SWNMforestry.org. So each community, each of the six communities has its own page, and the Silver City page has all the information on Silver City. We’ve had preliminary meetings with town staff, and so a lot of the priorities, people we’ve talked to to date, that’s all on the town page. Click a button, and then you can take the survey. So yes, please, we’d love more input, council members, please. We’d love to hear what, since you all are so close to your constituents and the concerns and needs of your constituents in your respective districts, if you have residents that have tree care, tree maintenance, tree planting needs, we’d love to hear about them in the survey. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next on the reports is the manager's report. Do you have a report, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next is public hearings, item nine, and there are none. Next is unfinished business, and there is none. Next is item 11, new business. Under new business 11A is the approval/disapproval of a public celebration permit, license number SPL000032 for the Oktoberfest for October 5, 2024, with alcohol served from 11:00 AM to 9:30 PM at 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, license number SPL000032, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Brandy?
Yeah. I don't know if this is on, or it was on. Technology may don't work. Yeah, so, we turn in our permitting for, or are hoping to turn in our permitting for Oktoberfest. It is also homecoming for Western, so we'll be at the game as well. We are proposing a street closure again. We've changed, as you guys have the maps, how we do the street closure this year. So, we have multiple accesses, one from the street itself, as well as the sidewalks. So, we'll have an extra security for that, for that second entrance. And then, we'll set up after the homecoming parade. So, it'll be a fun little frenzy for me in the morning. And then, we'll have the Oktoberfest, same stuff as last year and the year before, music. We'll have our food out there. We'll be selling out there. We'll have some games and things like that, and then normal service on the inside.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilor Connaught?
I have several, actually. So, Oktoberfest was rough last year. And by rough, I mean anybody that was disabled had a really hard time. So, I know that Chief Lambert will be out there, and I know that Fire Marshal Vuskis will be out there as well. Two things that concern me. First, it says, "Security with access to street level or stairs or ramp." The "or" is what gets me. All of those things should have access. So...
I do, I can, so we...
Chief Lambert, this is your response?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, council, we're actually gonna do with Brandy tomorrow.
To discuss the particulars and make sure that there is ADA access from both sides, which was the problem last year.
I have two more things. Also, can we have that clearly marked? Because last year, it was not marked. And so, I saw more than one person in a wheelchair come, see that was not available, and left without realizing that they could open the fence.
I'll make sure that happens.
Okay. And then, the last thing is, last year, there were tables on the sidewalk so that if you even made it onto the sidewalk, then you couldn't make it into the building because all of the sidewalks were blocked. So, could we not do that this year, please?
Easily. Yeah. That's not a problem at all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion. Counselor Binko?
I move to approve a public celebration permit for the Oktoberfest, October 5, 2024, with alcohol served from 11:00 AM to 9:30 PM at 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, license number SPL000032, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Next is agenda item 11B, is the approval/disapproval of a public celebration permit for the Gila River Festival for September 26, 2024, with alcohol served from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM at 214 West Yankee Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Open Space Brewery, license number SPL000112, post office box 2369, Silver City, New Mexico, 88062. Alexis Tubbs?
Alexa, by the way. But thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. We're really excited for this event. The Gila River Festival is back on this year, and excited to partner with them and promote all the good work that they do. So, we'd be looking for your support for this beer garden to kick off the event essentially at the Seabot Center for the Arts on Yankee Street.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of a public celebration permit for the Gila River Festival for September 26, 2024, with alcohol served from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM at 214 West Yankee Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Open Space Brewing License, number SPL900112, PO Box 2369, Silver City, New Mexico, 88062.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, that's 00112.
Oh, mine has three zeros.
Yeah. Anyway, any questions or comments? We have a motion. Do we have a second, Counselor Snyder?
I'll second the motion as stated.
Okay. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Item 11C is the approval/disapproval of a special dispenser permit for the Silver City Pride Fest for September 20 through 21, 2024, with alcohol served on Friday, September 20th, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and on Saturday, September 21, from 11:00 AM to 7:30 PM, at 1201 North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, One Q Southern Bistro LLC license, DIS 001292, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Mr. Cantana?
Yeah, we're just working with the LGBTQ community on their Pride Fest that they hold annually. We've done several of them over the past couple of years, and we are just asking for approval on this event. Just gonna be a small beer garden right there on the east side of the basketball court, which will be fenced off, just a small area that will have construction grade fencing around it. And then, we'll have one entrance, one exit, and then just a security guard at the entrance, carding everybody.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for that diagram. It was pretty easy to follow.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion? Counselor Snyder?
I move to approve a special dispensary permit for the Silver City Pride Fest for September 20, 21, 2024, with alcohol served on Friday, September 20th, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and on Saturday, September 21st, from 11:00 AM to 7:30 PM at 1201 North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Q Southern Bistro LLC, license number DIS 001292, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Connaught?
Mayor, I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Next, Mr. Cantana, is agenda item 11D, is the approval/disapproval of a special dispenser permit for the Autism Fest for October 12, 2024, with alcohol served from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM at 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, One Q Southern Bistro LLC, liquor license number DIS 001202, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Mr. Cantana?
So, this event is gonna be a car show with the Viejitas Car Club. They're actually the ones that are hosting it. They just asked if they could do it in front of the restaurant, because they've seen some of the other events that we've done. It's similar to a lot of the other events that we do where we block off the east side of Pope Street in front of Q's. And then, there's gonna be cars from their car club and then other car clubs from around the state that they're just doing to raise money for autism. And they just asked if we would be able to have a small beer garden for the people that are coming to support this. And they're gonna have bands and DJs and stuff like that, just similar kind of to some of the other events that we've done. So, this will be the first one that we are doing with them, but hopefully, it's not the last, just because they're trying to raise money for a good cause. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
It's gonna be the entrance right in the beginning, how we usually do carding stuff. And then, we're, I also need to get with, because we're gonna need a, we're gonna ask for, to rent the tent, so that way, there's a little bit of shade and stuff like that. But the road closure will be from college to, I believe, that cross street right before HMS. And there's gonna be cars just hopefully filled up through that whole entire area, hopefully.
Any questions? Counselor Binko?
Anthony, is it gonna be fenced off like last year?
Just the, just the beer garden area. So, the roads will be closed with no fencing, but similar to kind of, I mean, we've done several events just where it's, where the median is, they'll just be fencing right before the median. So, it'll be just in front of Q's, the parking lot, and then the street in front of Q's. And then, the cars will be parked on the west side of Pope, which is where the new co-op's gonna be all along that way, and then all the way down to the end. So, hopefully, once we get going and the co-op gets going, we could start throwing festivals together.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Counselor Binko?
I move to approve a special dispensary permit for the Autism Fest for October 12, 2024, with alcohol served from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Q Southern Bistro, liquor license, number DIS 001292, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Snyder?
I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comment? Nothing from Counselor Prince?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cantana. Agenda item 11E is the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2024-19, a resolution to name the Silver City, New Mexico Recreational Center, the Henry V. LaBurra Morales Recreation Center. Counselor Connaught, you?
Yes. So, you all read the resolution. That has a lot of the history of Mr. Morales's life in it, so you know that. I would like to read a letter of support that I received and then also make a few more comments. It says, "To whom, and you can, I'll get you guys copies of this if you want, "To whom it may concern, I would like to put my support behind the effort to name the new recreation center in Silver City after the late Henry Morales, 1948, 2019. I got to know Henry as my Little League coach in the late 1980s. My team was coached by Henry, Tony Trujillo, and my dad, Richard Rogers. And it was the start of what was many years of working with Henry and his kids, Howie, Michelle, Marvin, and Eric, in various capacities around youth sports in Silver City. Henry was instrumental in helping our local Mexican-American population not only fit in, but excel at athletic activities in Silver City and the greater mining district. Besides coaching various youth-level and high-school-level sports, he was also regularly a part of the color guard to present colors for the national anthem at area sporting events. Henry was a no-nonsense coach, but also very knowledgeable. I learned many valuable lessons throughout the baseball fundamentals and expectations about how to carry ourselves with confidence and with class. Many of his own children and other athletes he coached over the years continue to help our local youth through teaching, coaching, officiating, or other mostly volunteer efforts to enrich their experiences. Personally, I have been a teacher, a swimming instructor, and coached and referred youth to soccer for many years. Along with my teaching at area schools, I also spent many years as a middle school and high school level coach for soccer, softball, football, and track. These days, I am still helping out as a football chain official, an announcer for volleyball, soccer, and basketball. But I am just one of many who carry on Henry's legacy of helping make our youth athletics programs successful and enjoyable. It is my honor to support the effort to put the name Henry Morales on this new facility, a facility that he would have no doubt spent many years in helping kids grow and mature. Thank you for your consideration, Mr. Aaron Rogers, New Mexico Level 3 Math Teacher, Silver High School." And then, my comments. My comments might be a little more emotional. Sorry about that. I know that the press likes to report every time I get emotional, so tonight will be nothing new. But in this case, I am more than happy to be emotional because I believe in this resolution with all my heart, and it's very important to me. When we first started thinking about the possibility of a new recreation center, two things came to my mind. A, it needed to be truly accessible, and B, it should be named the Henry V. LaBurra Morales Recreation Center. I'm a lifelong resident of Silver City. Well, I was never athletic. My younger sister and the majority of our friends all were. I sat through many Little League, youth basketball league, and Lady Colts softball games in my lifetime. I got to watch my friends and family have these opportunities to participate because of Henry Morales. Not every community has individuals who are willing to put together leagues so that the youth of their community will have a chance to enjoy recreation. At the same time, in this day and age, many just take for granted that their towns will provide these leagues, not realizing that someone in the past, that sometime in the past, it was only because someone was willing to put in a whole lot of work developing these programs that their kids have a chance to play now. I had the opportunity to grow up with Henry's children. So, the vast majority of my, majority of my childhood friends were the kids who were coached by Henry in those first years when he was developing these programs. Many of those kids grew up to be teachers and coaches and are now active as adults running the Little League and youth basketball programs. Learning about Henry's role in starting the Lady Colts softball program really gave me a huge sense of pride. My little sister was a Lady Colts softball player. One of our cousins also played for that program before going on to play college softball at Western New Mexico University with the team that made it to the Collegiate World Series. I actually met one of my very best friends because she happened to play for the Lady Colts. There wouldn't have been a 13-time state championship Lady Colts softball team without Coach Morales's vision for this community. My family stories are not unique. Ask any local family, and I can almost guarantee that they have a connection to Henry Morales. In most cases, those connections are multi-generational. Even now that Mr. Morales is no longer with us, the effects that he has had on his community continue, especially when his grandchildren take the filter court. While many people have affected various sports around the county for, over the years, no one has had such a widespread effect on the recreation of our youth as a whole. From our littlest kids who are just trying to out their first sport, to the members of the Copper County Senior Olympic State Gold Medalist softball team that he played on, I was in stands for that game, too. Henry Morales is synonymous with Grant County Recreation. I look forward to maybe five or 10 years down the line, hearing kids ask each other what they're doing after school, and hearing someone say, "We're going to play basketball, LaBurra." What a wonderful way to honor Henry's legacy, one he created never knowing... never knowing that one day the town would honor him, hopefully, for all his incredible service to all of us. I'm hopeful that we pass this resolution this evening and name our new recreation center the Henry V. La Burra Recreation Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Counselor Connaught? Counselor Ben Connaught?
Mayor, I just, I was, I read the resolution and was really kind of taken back at just how involved Mr. Morales was in with our local youth. And my kids participated in a lot of the events that he put together, so I'm really thankful for that. He was a, he served in the military. He was a United States Army veteran. He actually coached our first state championship here for the girls. And as everybody knows, we have thirteen state championships that has resulted as, as him doing this. So I truly support this.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Connaught? Counselor Connaught? Counselor Prince?
In the thirteen years that I've been a member of this community, being a source of Morales, all the working stuff, coaching, I am so fortunate to be able to work amongst so many folks who have been actively, so positively, as we've set the efforts of everybody and everything that as well as the council, for ensuring that it's a sustainable project. Thank you.
I was going to have Counselor Connaught read the resolution, but I think you did a good job summarizing his life. Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution 2024 dash nineteen, a resolution to name the Silver City, New Mexico Recreation Center, the Henry V. La Burra Morales Recreation Center.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Snyder?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Counselor Ben Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is agenda item eleven F, is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2024 dash twenty, a resolution by the Town of Silver City Council for the approval of the Silver City Water Works logo. Ms. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tom Silver. So the Town of Silver City and Swinmac have been working hard at restoring the Silver City Water Works property. And so in doing that, we are hoping to adopt a logo that would kind of pull together all of the work that has been done over the years and give like a distinct, you know, a distinct logo for the property. So in your packets, if you guys had, had seen, it's in there, and it was done by Damian Davies, a local artist. And we're hoping to kind of follow that footprint for other town spaces with like a notable sort of object and like a plant that's kind of referenced it with the same sort of font, and for all the other different areas, like maybe possibly like the Botanical Garden or things like that. So thank you for your consideration.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Oh, I think Counselor Prince wants to.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I move to approve Resolution 2024 dash twenty, resolution by Town of Silver City for the approval of the Silver City Water Works logo.
Is there a second? Counselor Ben Connaught?
I'll second. Let's see.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Counselor Ben Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item eleven G is the approval slash disapproval of cancellation of the September twenty-four, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting due to Mayor Ladner and Councilors Ben Connaught, Prince, and Connaught attending the 2024 Outdoor Economics Conference on September twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, and no pending business for the September twenty-four, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting. Are there any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ben Connaught?
Mayor, I move to approve the cancellation of the September twenty-four, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting due to Mayor Ladner and Councilors Ben Connaught, Prince, and Connaught attending the 2024 Outdoor Economic Conference on September twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, and no pending business for the September twenty-four, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Snyder?
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Counselor Snyder?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Counselor Ben Connaught? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are hereby adjourned.